I call the order, the April 27th, 2017 Business Meeting and ask the County Administrator, please take a roll.
Well, good morning Commissioners. We have Mr. Nate Boderman here, representing County Council. And as always, we have Mary Rathke here, serving as your Clerk to the Board. I'll start with a roll. Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first off, today, before we begin today's business meeting, I want to recognize National Take Our Daughter and Son to Work Day. And especially welcome the young people in our audience this morning. Congress has dedicated the 4th Thursday in April as Take Our Daughters and Sons to Work Day. The public education program connects what children learn at school with the actual working world. Take Our Daughters and Sons to Work helps girls and boys across the nation discover the power and possibilities associated with a balanced work and family life. The theme of this year is Count on Me. Who do you count on? You may look to friends, teammates, family, mentors, teachers, to not let you down. And in return, they can count on you to do the same for them. Being part of the workplace team also involves accepting responsibilities. When each team member acts responsibly, it makes the workplace more successful. I want to thank and recognize our county employees for sharing their day with their daughters and sons and showing that public service can be a rewarding and meaningful career. Would all the children and county employees please join us? You can come up here, sit in our chairs, and we'll take a group photo. Just don't push the bars to drop down and the please to arrive button.
Are you guys welcome? Okay. You know what? If you guys can just stand like this, come over here. Oh, she made, this little girl made puppets for you guys.
Are we ready? Come up a little closer, up front.
Closer? Okay, okay, guys. Here we go.
Watch that.
No, you're okay. Sit down, sweetie. Everyone keep your eyes open and smile.
Three, two, one. And three, two, one.
What good smiles, everybody.
Three, two, one.
Thank goodness you didn't go.
Good job. Yay, thank you guys.
He's not giving up the chair, Jim.
Okay, alrighty. Oh, there's some more kids coming. We have another group, guys.
Second wave.
We have a second wave, gentlemen.
What's his name?
Matt. Matt works in finance. Is this his daughter?
Thank you.
Matt, wave your hand. Just Matt, yeah. I think Sonya's on her way. She just arrived.
While we're gonna have a presentation next, you guys should stick around a little bit, see how government works or doesn't work. The next presentation is Clackamas County Dog Service Adoption Story.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I will introduce Sarah Holcomb with Dog Services. You each, this is actually very, very appropriate because each of you got a puppet from Ava of a dog and goes right along with the presentation. And this is a good news story, good news adoption story from Clackamas County Dog Services. Go right ahead.
So, thank you for having me back. I am Sarah, the Fundraising and Volunteer Coordinator for Clackamas County Dog Services. Before we, oops, oops, I skipped ahead. So before we start with today's Happy Tales story, I just wanted to give you a little background on how this story was such a success. The Clackamas Dogs Foundation is a nonprofit that supports Clackamas County Dog Services. We're a 501(c)(3) established in 2013 and supported solely by donations. And our mission is to support the programs of Clackamas County Dog Services and advance dog welfare in our community. So some of the programs that the foundation works on is a low-income spay and neuter program. So low-income families in Clackamas County can purchase a one-year dog license and then we provide them with a voucher for a spay and neuter. The foundation helps support dog training and adoptability, volunteer recruitment, and our most recent project is the Emergency Vet Fund, which I'm gonna talk about today. Then in November, they allocated $20,000 to Dog Services discretion to use for dogs that come in that might need a little more vet care than we're usually able to provide. So today, I want to introduce you to Elvira. She came in in not-so-great shape, as you can see from some of the pictures. She is an American Bulldog-Pit Bull mix, we thought, just a few weeks old when she came in. And she had a swollen face, trauma, multiple masses on her, and we're not really sure how she got to us in this condition. As I said, she was brought in as a stray. So we had to transfer her to an emergency vet clinic pretty much right away, just to get her stabilized. As you can see now, Elvira had to spend a few days at the emergency vet clinic. And if anyone has pets and knows overnight costs at emergency vet clinics, they rack up pretty quickly. And the Vet Fund was able to help out with those bills. While she was at the clinic, vet techs and veterinary staff learned that she also was deaf while she was there. So she was transferred to the Deaf Dogs of Oregon Rescue, where they work on specialized training for their dogs and help them get adopted to homes that know how to deal with deaf dogs. As you can see now, I just talked with the woman who adopted her. She's doing great. She has new dog friends to cuddle with. She's still working on her training. It's in a very loving and, the mother says, very spoiled home. So I wanted to say thank you to you guys for all the support and invite you to our Putts for Mutts fundraiser for the Clackamas Dogs Foundation. These programs would not be able to work without our donations coming in. So our fundraiser is on May 18th at Sahalee Golf Course. We have putt-putt dinner, endless amounts of dog talk, and just some good fun, helping raise funds for the Dog Services. And one thing we did want to mention, because we do occasionally receive calls about cats in our community, we wanted to offer some resources for our feline friends. So if you have any questions about cats, you can contact the Feral Cat Coalition of Oregon or the Cat Adoption Team, and they're able to help you out with cat resources.
Great, thank you very much. The next item is Citizen Communication. This is a time we allow citizens in the county to come up. They've got three minutes to tell us, you know, what interests them, what we should be doing in the future, what we're doing right, or what we're doing wrong. So we have first up Scott Connors and Carol Mastrenard. And when you come up, just tell us your name and the city or area you live in.
Hello, my name is Carol Mastrenard. I live in urban, unincorporated Clackamas County in Jennings Lodge. And I have a letter that represents the Friends of Jennings Lodge, and that's whom I'm representing here today. Most of the oral comments I'm making are my own rather than the groups. And once you've read the letter, you'll see that the primary issue is that the County Planning Department's Director ignored what we felt was the necessity of passing on a letter from our attorney to the hearings officer regarding the application for 16.7 acre development in our urban area. And the reason that we presented this letter to you was that you're our governing body in unincorporated Clackamas County, and we would like to have the planning staff and Director be aware that we would like them to respond to us when we communicate with them. When I sent the letter, in the bottom of that letter that I sent to you, when I sent the planning director a letter, an email about the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, which is a federal act, saying that in this area that they want to develop, there's 426 trees, and we don't feel they should be felled until the nesting season is over, I got absolutely no response from the planning director. And I still have not gotten a response from him personally. Somebody else in the Friends sent him a more angry letter than I did, and they've been exchanging angry emails back and forth since. But I guess the main issue is that we just don't feel like we got heard at all by the planning staff through this whole process. We had over 1,000 pages of testimony at the hearing, and not one of our issues was directly addressed. That's about all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Maybe we'll get you some, we can get you some answers.
Appreciate it.
I just want to just say, the only person I heard from about this was from Bob Murch, who I know is active in helping you all.
He's part of the Friends.
And so I did reach out to him in response to his letter, and Mike replied both to me and then subsequently to Bob on Monday about this. So, and briefly, as it relates to the bird issue, migratory bird issue, I'll just read you an excerpt out of Mike's email that the county is not responsible for administering the Federal Migratory Bird Treaty Act. And his concern, he goes on to say, his concern is that if we tried to, that we would be subject to probably a lawsuit, or culpable for a lawsuit from the developer for impeding that demolition permit, which we issued. So that's the entanglement, as I see it.
The first email that I personally sent regarding the Bird Treaty Act asked Michael to notify Lennar that there was such a law. We didn't ask, I didn't ask the county to enforce that or try to enforce it. It's enforced by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And I actually have gotten a call from them. So it's going through the correct channels now, but the point was that, more to the point was that we did not ever hear back from Mr. McAllister about this. He could have emailed me and just said, "The county doesn't enforce that." But we had to find that out on our own.
Carol, if I had known that you had interest or had been copied on email, I'd make sure that you got, you know, you got your answer, your question answered.
Yes, and your string with Bob and Mike was forwarded to me, or to all of us. Yeah, so.
Great. Before you start, you know, if your kids and the parents want to go ahead and leave, you're welcome to at any time. Thank you.
I want to thank all the parents and kids out there for brightening our morning with your presence. It's always great to see youth. It just brightens my day, I'll just tell you that personally. So thank you.
Scott?
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Scott Connors, and you're gonna find, under Section E of today's agenda, the approval, approving the transfer of Cable Television Franchise of Government Camp Cable to Mount Hood Management Government Camp Communications. And I wanted to just take three minutes, or two minutes and 44 seconds, and tell you a little bit about what we're doing up there, because it's, I think it's a good story, and we think it's a good story. And it's not a story about infrastructure and essential services. It's a story about community. And that's how our vision for communications in Government Camp and on the mountain is coming together. And let me explain. The partnership that exists extends from Sandy Net all the way to Warm Springs Reservation. We are using the Warm Springs in partnership. They're a vital part of our infrastructure on the mountain and our employment base, and we're using them for the construction and development and laying the fiber optic cables as we convert from the COAC system to fiber optics up there. Also in partnership with the CIO of Sandy Net, Joe Knapp. We are treating this as a community effort. We are pricing this as a community effort. We are partnering with those up there that live and work and make that mountain their home. And we are very excited with the progress that we have so far. Our long-term plans are to continue to grow the community, as you probably well know, and as we grow that community, provide the infrastructure and the communications infrastructure, which we consider to be, as we all do, probably essential services now, right? It's just like power. And so it's vital to us and important to us that we allow the entire community to be a part of it. And whether you are a Native American on the reservation, a resident of Sandy Net, we are working as a community together, along with all the residents of Government Camp, to bring that dream to reality. And I wish I could share the stories of when we knock on the doors and we're at the Homeowners' Association meetings, or at the CPO meetings, and we say this story. They tell us over and over, "Keep going. How can we help you? How can we be a part of it?" And I wanted to share that with the Board this morning, for no other reason than it just feels good to do it right. And we want to thank you for your support. We look forward to working with you more in the future as we develop this infrastructure, and always know that it's with community first that we look at this project. And I wanted to take this time this morning, just to let you know what we were doing, and it's not just another telecommunications project. It's a community endeavor.
Well, thank you very much. I mean, we don't hear that often. It is an area that's not heavily populated. It's probably not a market where a lot of revenue is generated, but it's exciting to have somebody serving that underserved area. And so we did a broadband project a few years ago at the request of Sandy. And I imagine, I don't really understand that much about this process, but I'm sure that you've benefited from our broadband project. But we did that because no one else would. And it's great to hear that somebody is thinking that way, that, doing this work for the community.
Yeah. Sandy Net is really an example nationwide of how it works right. We're following that model and we're using their leadership, really, and I'm stepping out of the way. I'm smart enough to know what I know and know what I don't know, and I don't know either. So the reality is that Sandy Net has really paved the way for how this should be done in smaller communities. And as you get more rule, and how do you get that telecommunications product and infrastructure to the rural communities with microwave technology, or cellular technology, or fiber optic technology, those guys have done a fantastic job. We're happy that they're lending their assistance. And that's based primarily on the work that you guys did with them.
Great. Ken?
I just would point out that it's reminiscent of the 1930s with the rural electrification and telephone systems that corporations were unable or unwilling to do at that time, and the government took it on, and it changed rural America. And I think it's an extremely important project that you're doing. And information technology is absolutely crucial to the success of communities going forward in the future. So congratulations, and hopefully we will be able to partner with you continuously in the future.
Ken, thank you. That is our hope.
Great, thank you. Next up is our weekly visitor, Les Poole.
I have a few friends that do call me the Sixth Commissioner, but I'm only one voice. And it's great to see the kids here today, well behaved. Anybody that's watched me comment in the last few months, over and over, I've commented on the decorum here. If your parents make you go to more of these meetings, a lot of the times, there won't be any interaction like there is now, where questions are answered. And input can be positive or negative, but that's not the point. The responsiveness here and the ability to be heard is dramatically different than when I showed up in 2011. There's, you know, some sad news. When I showed up in 2011, I decided I was gonna show up every week, or every week that I could, for two years. There was a lot going on, and there were a lot of unfunded situations in the county, and citizens were at awe with the leadership. And when I showed up, I decided that, one of the reasons I'd be here was that it would inspire a few others to show up, you know? It would inspire a few others. Somebody's gonna show up. You know, there's 400,000 people out there. And the week that I showed up in May, there was Richard Langdon. The week that I showed up in May, the room was pretty empty. And anyone that goes back and looks at video and sees some of the things that went on in the last half of 2011 and clear through 2012, they'll see government working, not working, they'll see citizen involvement, and it's quite a story. Sadly, one of the people that did show up was outspoken Mac Woods. And four or five months ago, he said that they'd found a spot of cancer, and he was gonna go in for a procedure. And being the kind of guy he was, of course, he didn't tell us that the outcome of that wasn't good. And, you know, just continued to, I don't want to use the word pretend, but be noble and not be a drag on anyone, and really not tell folks. And then, you know, three weeks ago, I thought, you know, "I haven't seen Mac in a while," and called, no answer, you know? And, you know, we found out that he was in hospice, and he passed away the day before yesterday. He was the inspiration, as crotchety as he could be, he had a great heart. And he was the inspiration for Senate Bill 694 that I've been working on, and that we're gonna find a way to get passed. I would hope that the citizens would go to the Oregon Legislative System website, look up Olus, type in Senate Bill 694, look for Alan Olson, the sponsor. Pretty easy to email them and let them know you'd like to see this tax credit, I'll call it a tax credit extended to disabled vets, especially in honor of Mac and everyone else. I also do want to thank Commissioner Humberston. He's been really involved in the issue. I'm a little over the time here, so I'll wrap up for now. I do want to say one thing. There is an article in the Clackamas Review about the bomber. And it's in Salem at McNary Field. It's been featured in a Fox News show, Strange Inheritance, and it was aired last night. And it's really heartwarming, and it's been great to be a part of that. And you can find them by looking up the V-17 Alliance. I'm not sure if I'll be here next week, but I'll be done in less than three minutes next time.
All right, thanks, Les.
We're gonna average it out, apparently.
Thank you for coming today, and we're gonna move on to the next item, which is a reading and adoption of previous approved land use ordinances. I guess I'll let you introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have two of these items on your agenda for this morning. The first is ZDO 262. It involves the adoption of Zoning and Development Ordinance 262, which are amendments to the zoning and development ordinance to implement and administer state laws applicable to natural resource zoning districts. And we have Mr. Nate Boderman here to present this item to you.
Thank you. Good morning Commissioners. This morning, as Administrator Crap mentioned, we are recommending adoption of an ordinance to adopt the previously approved ZDO 262 proposal, which relates to updates to the Natural Resource section of the county's zoning ordinance. The amendments implement recent changes in state law to increase clarity and consistency in our existing regulations. And you'll probably recall that the Board held public hearings on March 22nd, and by a vote of 5-0, approved ZDO 262 as recommended by staff, with additional amendments to correct some inconsistencies with state law regarding certain winery-related uses. Staff has drafted the ordinance before you today to reflect those changes and the decision that the Board made on March 22nd. And it's staff's recommendation that you approve the ordinance materials which implement that prior approval. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of Nate? Seeing none, ask for a motion to read ZDO 262 by title only.
Mr. Chair, I move we read ZDO 262 by title only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, read ZDO 262 by title only. And all those in, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously, and I'd ask the Clerk to read ZDO 262 by title only.
Okay, ordinance number ZDO 262, and ordinance amending Section 401, 406, 407, 1107, and 1307 of the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance.
And entertain a motion.
I move we approve, excuse me, I move we adopt zoning and development ordinance 262, amendments to the zoning and development ordinance to implement and administer state law applicable to the natural resource zoning districts, as previously approved at the March 22nd, 2017 land use hearing.
It's been moved by Commissioner Savis and seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda, ZDO 263.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is adoption of zoning and development ordinance 263, which are amendments to the zoning and development ordinance to implement changes to the county's marijuana-related land use regulations. And again, Mr. Nate Boderman is here to present this item to you.
This one probably deserves a little bit more explanation, but we can get through it fairly quick as well. So we are recommending adoption of the ordinance to adopt previously approved ZDO 263, which relates to amendments to the county's regulation of marijuana-related land uses. The amendments implement recent changes in state law and increase clarity and consistency in the existing regulations we currently have in our zoning and development ordinance. Planning Commission held a public hearing on February 13th and voted 7-0 to recommend approval of staff's recommended amendments, which included, among other things, fence design standards, certain changes to the code to conform to state law, and changes to increase the clarity of the existing regulations, like I mentioned before. By a vote of 5 to 1 with one abstention, the Planning Commission also voted to recommend that the Board continue to prohibit marijuana extract processing in the exclusive farm use and ag forest zones, and to not apply certain setbacks and minimum lot sizes to the processing of concentrates, edibles, and topicals. The Board of County Commissioners held a public hearing on March 22nd, and by a vote of 5-0 orally approved, ZDO 263 as recommended by the Planning Commission and staff, except that the Board deferred further consideration of amendments related to extract and concentrate processing in the EFU and ag forest zone until a meeting on May 17th. And so that'll be coming up before you in a couple weeks. Staff has drafted the ordinance before you today to reflect the Board's decision. And to be clear, what you're voting on today does not prohibit extract and concentrate processing in the EFU zone or the ag forest zone. Again, you'll be considering that here in a few weeks. So with that, it's staff's recommendation.
The amendments implement recent changes in state law and increase clarity and consistency in the existing regulations we currently have in our zoning and development ordinance. Planning Commission held a public hearing on February 13th and voted 7-0 to recommend approval of staff's recommended amendments, which included, among other things, fence design standards, certain changes to the code to conform to state law, and changes to increase the clarity of the existing regulations like I mentioned before. By a vote of 5 to 1 with one abstention, the Planning Commission also voted to recommend that the board continue to prohibit marijuana extract processing in the exclusive farm use and ag forest zones and to not apply certain setbacks and minimum lot sizes to the processing of concentrates, edibles, and topicals. The Board of County Commissioners held a public hearing on March 22nd and by a vote of 5-0 orally approved, ZDO 263 is recommended by the Planning Commission and staff, except that the board deferred further consideration of amendments related to extract and concentrate processing in the EFU and ag forest zone until a meeting on May 17th. And so that'll be coming up before you in a couple of weeks. Staff has drafted the ordinance before you today to reflect the board's decision. And to be clear, what you're voting on today does not prohibit extract and concentrate processing in the EFU zone or the ag forest zone. Again, you'll be considering that here in a few weeks. So it's with that, it's staff's recommendation that you approve the proposal before you today and happy to answer any questions on this particular.
Any questions? I was going to ask, when's that hearing on the other aspects that we considered? I really look forward to another hearing on marijuana. So I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we read ZDO 263 by title only.
Second.
They moved and seconded to read ZDO 263 by title only. And all those, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Ask the clerk to read ZDO 263 by title only.
Okay, this is ordinance number ZDO 263 and ordinance amending section 202, 316, 401, 407, and 841 of the Clackamas County zoning and development ordinance.
Ask for a motion to adopt.
Okay. I move we adopt zoning and development ordinance 263, amendments to the zoning and development ordinance to implement changes to the county's marijuana-related land use regulations as previously approved at the March 22nd, 2017 land use hearing.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt zoning and development ordinance 263, amended to the zoning and development ordinance to implement changes to the county's marijuana-related land use regulations as previously approved in March 22nd, 2007 land use hearing. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. The next item is, we have two public hearings.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this first public hearing is consideration of a board order that would initiate the transfer of jurisdiction from Clackamas County to the city of Wilsonville, a portion of Stafford Road, Market Road Number 12, and Advance Road, county roads 1208 and X-24. We have Mr. Rick Maxwell here from the Department of Transportation and Development to share information about this item for you.
Thank you. Welcome. Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Rick Maxwell. I'm with the Department of Transportation and Development. Today we have before you a resolution from the city of Wilsonville. They request the transfer of jurisdiction from the county to the city of portions of Stafford Road and Advance Road. This request has been thoroughly discussed by staff of both jurisdictions. Transferring jurisdiction of these portions of Stafford Road and Advance Road will allow the city of Wilsonville to complete a vital school, excuse me, roadway and intersection project that will match into the existing city street system. This will result in improving the efficiencies and coordination of development, maintenance, and public service requests. Notice for today's action was published for four consecutive weeks in the Wilsonville Spokesman newspaper. This request is consistent with the county's practice and policy of partnering with local jurisdictions to provide necessary government services at the least cost to our citizens. And I'd be happy to answer any questions there. Incidentally, there was no cost involved with this transfer.
Great. Any questions? I don't know why we wouldn't want to do this, but I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to speak on this item. Adam. Les.
I appreciate, just a quick chance to give some input. For those who don't know, the neighborhood is basically right where the city of Wilsonville meets farmland, and so it's right where growth is occurring. Obviously, those streets are in need of upgrading and the county would love to have you take over control of them. I agree with the chair. We've got a lot of transportation issues in the county and this is, to simply put it, a no-brainer. So you get two thumbs up and let's get this done. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? I'll close the public portion of this hearing and ask for a motion.
I move we approve the board order initiating a transfer of jurisdiction from Clackamas County to the city of Wilsonville for a portion of Stafford Road, Market Road Number 12, and Advance Road, county roads 1208 and X-24.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a board order initiating a transfer of jurisdiction from Clackamas County to the city of Wilsonville of a portion of Stafford, Market Road Number 12, Advance Road, county road 1208, and X-24. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a resolution.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is a resolution to consider the Clackamas County supplemental budget amendment for a change to the budget greater than 10% and a budget reduction as well for fiscal year 2016, 2017. We have our ever-skillful, knowledgeable, and talented Diane Padilla here to present this item to you. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, I'm here to request approval of a supplemental budget of 10% or greater of the funds involved. This is a kind of budget change that lets us make either more significant dollar amount changes or also to add a spending category where one was not previously budgeted in the fund. This requires that a public notice be published, and it was published in the Lake Oswego Review on April 20th as well as being noticed on the county website. We have two funds to consider this morning. The first is the road fund, which is requesting to recognize transfer of prior city of Damascus road funding and receipt of remaining state highway fund revenues restricted to use within the prior city limits and budget for payment of services on roads within those boundaries during the fiscal year 2016-17 winter storm event and contingency and reserves. The amount of this increase is $3,390,339, almost all of which is being budgeted in reserves for future use. In addition, the road fund is asking to transfer from contingency to special payments for potential payments to cities in lieu of making road improvements prior to a transfer of road jurisdiction. This second item is not a change in the total amount of the budget, but a transfer between spending categories of $300,000. And the other fund requesting a change is the social services fund, which would like to transfer $300, sorry, $7,758 from materials and services to capital outlay to purchase a bike trailer for the Mountain Express program. So the total increase to the county budget as a result of these two actions would be And with that, I would respectfully request approval of this supplemental budget.
So underneath is the social service fund with nothing in it?
Well, it's, the net effect is a zero. I realize it looks kind of funny in the summary, but yeah, we're transferring $7,758 from the materials and services to capital outlay because they didn't previously have a capital outlay category, which is why it becomes a supplemental budget.
Okay.
But the bottom line stays the same. And yes, it does look odd.
All right. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion. Oh, wait, I got to open a public hearing. Open a public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the resolution for a Clackamas County supplemental budget greater than 10% and budget reduction for fiscal year 2016-17.
There a second? Somebody needs to say second. There isn't.
Second.
Unless you, Commissioner Savis.
I have to have someone in the audience, will you say second? Okay. It's moved and seconded to approve a resolution for Clackamas County supplemental budget greater than 10% and a budget reduction for fiscal year 2016-2017. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under health, housing, and human services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Multnomah County for the reduction of opioid overdose and death program. Approval of a revenue agreement with Care Oregon for dental health expansion. Approval of a revenue agreement with Care Oregon for dental health expansion to update existing equipment and the purchase of additional equipment. Approval of a grant agreement from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development continuing continuum of care program for the HOPE leasing program for the purpose of providing permanent housing. Approval of a grant agreement from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development supportive housing program for the rent well rapid rehousing program. Approval of a grant agreement from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Housing Our Families. Approval of a grant agreement from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Coordinated Housing Access System. Under finance, approval of a resolution for a Clackamas County supplemental budget less than 10% for fiscal year 2016-2017. Approval of a resolution for Clackamas County for budgeting of new specific purpose revenue for fiscal year 2016-2017. Approval of a resolution for Clackamas County for transfer of appropriations for fiscal year 2016-2017. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under the Department of Disaster Management, approval of fiscal year 2015 urban area security initiative sub-recipient grant agreement with the city of Milwaukee. Under public and government affairs, we have a board order approving the transfer of the cable television franchise of Government Camp Cable, Inc. to Mount Hood Management, DBA Government Camp Communications. And a board order approving the renewal of the cable television franchise agreement for the use of county right-of-way by Government Camp Cable, Inc. And now I'm turning it over to Dawn.
Okay, so I'm going to handle the last page of our rather lengthy consent agenda items. From the Development Agency, we have approval of a funding agreement between Clackamas County Development Agency and North Clackamas School District for improvements to Mount Scott Elementary School. For water environment services, we have approval of amendment number two to the contract documents with Brown &amp; Caldwell Incorporated and Clackamas County Service District Number One for on-call surface water technical services. We have approval of amendment number two to the contract documents with Herrera Environmental Consultants, Incorporated and Clackamas County Service District Number One for on-call surface water technical services. We have approval of amendment number two to the contract documents with OTAC Incorporated and Clackamas County Service District Number One for on-call surface water technical services. Approval of amendment number two to the contract documents with Parametrics Incorporated and Clackamas County Service District Number One for on-call surface water technical services. And approval of amendment number two to the contract documents with Waterways Consulting, Incorporated and Clackamas County Service District Number One for on-call surface water technical services. And approval of amendment number two to the contract documents with Brown &amp; Caldwell Incorporated and Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County for on-call surface water technical services. Approval of amendment number two to the contract documents with Herrera Environmental Consultants, Incorporated and Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County for on-call surface water technical services. Approval of amendment number two to the contract documents with OTAC Incorporated and Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County for on-call surface water technical services. Approval of amendment number two to the contract documents with Parametrics Incorporated and Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County for on-call surface water technical services. And then finally, approval of amendment number two to the contract documents with Waterways Consulting, Incorporated and Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County for on-call surface water technical services.
Commissioner Humberson, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm curious as to why we have so many contracts for what appears to be the same service.
So we can access on-call services at any particular time, any particular need. This is a way of assuring that we engage multiple firms with multiple expertise to meet our technical service needs.
So do I understand that to mean that if one company can't respond at a particular time, you have another company in line that you can call for the service?
Exactly, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Answers my question.
Yes.
So I'm just looking at number 20, which is the approval of funding agreement between the Clackamas County Development Agency and North Clackamas School District. And I see that an ordinance was passed before I came on the board on January 12th, 2017, which adopted the plan for the use of the urban renewal funds. And so I'm just not sure if I should just pull this out and abstain on it. I know that there's been questions, as a new county commissioner, I've received questions about how funds are used in the urban renewal district, and I've worked with our staff and got questions answered, and I'm just not sure if this, what I should do with this because I just don't know enough to feel like I can consent at this point.
So I'm turning over to Mr. Boderman to give you some counsel and advice.
I don't think there's anything that would necessarily disqualify you, per se, to vote on this. If your comfort level isn't where you feel it needs to be on the particular item, it would be appropriate for you to abstain. But it's just a matter, of course, not being on the board for that previous amendment wouldn't disqualify you automatically to vote on this particular matter. But I would defer to you as to your comfort level and familiarity with the subject matter.
Okay.
What do you want to do?
Can we just hold for just like two minutes and I'll be right back?
Okay.
Is that okay? Just take a quick break.
Sure. Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out three things on the consent agenda today that I'm happy to see. It all has to do with housing, health, housing, and human services. One is a grant asking, let's see, I'm trying to figure it, request the approval of a renewal grant agreement from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's continuum of care program for the HOPE leasing program for the purpose of providing permanent housing. This program provides permanent housing by paying for housing deposits and rental assistance. Chronically homeless individuals receive support services, case management, and housing with the use of these grant funds. A minimum of 15 households receive assistance each year, and I just wanted to point out that's one of the pieces we're doing with housing. The next housing piece, basically, again, was request to approve of a renewal grant agreement from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's continuum of care program for the rent well rapid rehousing program. The program is designed to reduce housing barriers and provide rental assistance for permanent housing for homeless individuals and families. These funds provide the social service division with resources to provide rental assistance, rental education, skills training classes, case management, and supportive services to homeless participants. The grant is about $118,000. It will provide assistance to about 123 households. And finally, the last housing piece was again another grant from the U.S. Department of HUD to provide funding to rapidly rehouse literally homeless families with children under 18. It will also provide funding to work with parenting youth and families who are reunifying and expect to have their children returned to their custody within 90 days after housing is obtained. This will serve at least eight families. The grant is a little over $150,000. These are all really, I'm glad to see us move forward, but what was striking to me is, you know, we're doing a lot for very little money, you know? And I know that we have to be on our best game because it may be that these kinds of dollars are in peril at the federal level, and I think it behooves this county to stay on top of it and make sure HUD gets its funding and that our community development block grants continue to get funded because we use these funds very effectively. And as we all know, and Commissioner Savis and I have been working on some housing issues, we are in a housing crisis, so every little bit helps. So on the consent agenda, but I just thought, I just thought these in particular needed to have a shout-out today. So thank you, colleagues.
Great, Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, I just want to just assist Commissioner Fisher in understanding basically what that agenda item is.
I'm okay. I'm good. Don't need to talk about it.
It was a good faith effort to replace some revenue that they, in the course of the urban renewal district. the urban renewal district, I guess they sacrificed a little bit of revenue, and it's a means of our good faith effort from the county to give some of the taxing districts some of that revenue back in some form of benefit. And I believe that there was a little bit of an adjustment to make that happen.
Well, fortunately Nancy is here who's part of the neighborhood, and I just wanted to check with her to make sure that this was all in line with where the priorities are, and she affirmed that yes, this is a good thing, and I am comfortable proceeding with it on the consent agenda.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
I thought I was going to have to second it.
Not this time.
Anyway, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the county administrators' update.
Yes, thank you. I've got three items to share with you, all of them good news. I'm happy to share with you that for the 24th straight year...
Mary, I thank you for doing that. I thought my hearing was going bad.
I'm noticing that...
I could barely hear you.
Is it?
Yeah, I do too.
At both sides, it's very difficult to hear folks. You need to get closer to the microphone or turn them up, one or the other, so you can hear me like this.
All right, is this, you can hear me?
That's better.
Sounds like they turned the dial up a little bit here. So what I want to share with you is that for the 24th straight year, both the Tri-City Service District and Clackamas County Service District Number One have received a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And this is a designation that's provided from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, and it really represents the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. So that's 24 years of outstanding performance there. And actually, it's not just these two districts that are the county's awardees. North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District has received its 22nd consecutive award just last month for its financial reporting. So great job Water Environment Services and great job North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. Nicely done. I also have got some kudos again for our Transportation and Development Staff. Last week, Development Staff for Deanna Mulder received the following note from a home business owner, Sue and Stephen Kay, and they say, "We just wanted to thank you for all your wonderful support over these last several years. We're not sure we would have made it without you and the encouragement you continually gave. As of last Thursday, we have passed all of our final inspections and hopefully meet all of the requirements needed. We look forward to being a legitimate home business that will contribute to our county and state. So thank you again for being a major player in helping us piece together our huge puzzle, and that seemed just too overwhelming. You are amazing." And I just wanted to take a moment to thank Deanna for that effort, her excellent service, and I wanted to thank Sue and Stephen for the very nice note. And so I have one last item to share with you, of course, as you know, and this is our last business meeting during National County Government Month. That's the month of April, and this year's theme has been brilliant ideas at work. And I had another brilliant idea that we are implementing here in Clackamas County to share with you. The District Attorney's Office has been reporting some really excellent participation for the cell phone donation program that helps victims of domestic violence. And so this year, the office, so far this year, has received some 80 used cell phone donations, and that's actually twice as many as all of 2016. So for each phone that we receive, a refurbished phone is provided to individuals at risk. So I just wanted to thank the District Attorney's Office for this valuable program. It's another brilliant idea at work here at Clackamas County.
Where do you drop those off?
I believe you drop them off at the District Attorney's Office.
Courthouse.
At the courthouse? Okay, great. Next up is Commissioner Fisher.
Oh, for communication?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Humberson and I went to the Dells for our county college, and I just wanted to share a highlight which was just really, really telling when after, so we go, we had a really wonderful dinner up in Wasco, Sherman County, up on 2,200 acres of wheat, which was really interesting. Commissioner, and help me out, what was his, what was his last name's?
Last name, I don't recall, but first name is Joe.
Joe, at Joe's place.
We went to Joe's place.
The focus of county college was public safety, and we met over at the jail in Wasco County. But the shout-out that I want to make, which was really quite educational for me, is after hours, after dinner, after we all got back to the hotel, some county commissioners, and granted, these are all very new county commissioners, we were sitting around in the lounge, of course, because that's where you congregate after nine o'clock, and county commissioners were sharing their budgets. I mean, how nerdy can you get? But they were sitting there with their budgets and they were going through them, and they were like confused, some were confused, like, "I just don't know what this means. I don't know what this says." And another county commissioner who has a background in baking says, "Well, look at my budget. I can really tell what it means because of this." And then I said, "Well, how do you measure what you're doing? How do you know what your programs are doing?" Because in Clackamas County, we have performance clackamas, and all of our budget initiatives are tied to what our strategic goals and initiatives are based on our policy. And they were, "Wow, that is great. We need that in our county." So we had quite the talk about policy, performance measures, how to prioritize, what's important. And I just want to say thank you to Clackamas County as a new county commissioner that I can come into this process, because we are entering our budget process, and I will be able to tell what we're doing, how it's tied with our priorities and our strategic results, and that is wonderful.
Great, thank you. Next up is Commissioner Humberson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, as was pointed out by my colleague, we did go to Wasco County. The subject matter was sort of a busman's holiday for me in that I retired from law enforcement, and the entire thing was all about public safety. So since I retired 20 years ago plus, actually, the refresher was good. Reminded me what I used to do and how things have changed in the last 20 years. Other events for me this week, I had an excellent meeting with a representative of the Oregon League of Conservation Voters who've shown some real interest in the cross laminated timber issue, and we've arranged a meeting with those folks and our team that's working on that, led by Rick Gruen. It was interesting to me that they were pointing out to us that they may have overreached a bit in the management of the forests because they have recognized that now we're losing more timber to fire and disease than we are to harvesting. So they are, I think, considering the idea of more sustainable harvesting and how that will be done, and that made them interested in what we're interested in doing. And hopefully, they will come on board and support what we're, where we're trying to go on that subject. Had the opportunity to do a Meals on Wheels ride-along in Milwaukee this week. That's an interesting program. It's almost entirely federally funded, but the folks that are doing the work are all volunteers, and they really should be commended for the work that they're doing in getting meals to senior citizens that in most cases are shut in, but are still able to live in their own home. Commissioner Bernard and I met with the mayors regarding the reserves issue this week, and we believe that things will be moving forward and the, ultimately, the reserves issue will be resolved, and we will be able to go to court and be successful in court and at the LCDC, which is the Land Use Group, and move this county forward. Last night, I had the privilege of attending a drug court graduation, and if you have never done that, I would highly encourage people to do it. It's a very moving moment. There were four young people who graduated from the drug court program with a total of well over 1,000 days of sobriety. One of the young ladies that graduated had 200, or excuse me, 371 days of sobriety and had achieved her GED through the course of the program. Very good work being done there, and it's a good example of well-invested money by this county. Let's see, what else? We also attended Community Solutions, got a briefing at Community Solutions today, which is a program that again gets grants funding and some funding from us to help disabled veterans and others with challenges towards employment, to get employed. And as you know, I tend to like numbers occasionally, so I'd just like to point something out, and that is that they have a 71 to 85% success rate in taking people that have either PTSD or other challenges to employment, and that just depends on the year, obviously, getting them prepared for and into jobs. The cost of that per person is approximately $1,200 a person. Now, when you consider that locking a person up in jail or prison costs $100 a day, and they are spending about $1,200 and they're getting people employed who then, of course, are not only not going to jail, a greater cost, but are also paying taxes and becoming productive members of society, that is money exceptionally well invested in a social service program, and we should be very proud of the work that they are doing. And at that, I'm ready to talk about the dog. Somebody was right on that because that picture came up quickly.
Cute face.
Yeah, it's a cute little guy.
So, this is Hershey. He's a three-year-old shy Chihuahua terrier mix who needs someone to teach him the ways of the world. He's learning to walk on a harness and meet new people. Hershey will do best in a quieter home without kids. If you would like to get to know him and help to continue his worldly education, come by and meet him. For more information about Hershey and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628 or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great, Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, well, I was appreciating actually the fact that we take public comment and because you learn things and you learn about things and how we can help people. And it was last week, we had one of our folks came and spoke to us and never saw him before. I believe I wrote his name down here. His name was Eugene Sahari, and he, I think he proffered the idea, suggestion that maybe we look at a transient room tax fee that would go towards the homeless. And I think we ought to entertain that. I did a little bit of research and realized that the state of Washington either was working on or passed a small portion of their sales tax dedicated towards helping fund a little bit of homeless efforts. I don't know exactly what the details are of that, but it would seem somewhat appropriate that those that have the privilege of maybe, you know, as we call it, heads on beds, but having the niceties of a warm bed and paying for an out-of-town visit, that that might be appropriate for a modest amount. That'd be something we ought to look into or talk about, maybe see what other governments have done in that regard. But I just wanted to put that out there that, you know, we do listen, that might be something we look into. Briefly, I know we talked, I just, I just want to just say a couple things about Mac Woods. So I do remember his passion. He got pretty excited. I do remember, as I recall him, his nephew, I guess, or distant nephew, was Tyrone Woods, one of the victims of the Benghazi event, and I know that he had a lot of passion about that. And also, Mac was a Navy, he was in the Navy, and I have a lot of family in the Navy and grew up in a really Navy town when I was a kid, or worked in a Navy town. I didn't grow up in a Navy town. So I want to just do a shout-out to that, but I do remember one of his sayings is, I think he believed, he had a couple of them, but one of them was, "You don't know what you don't know." And that one always stuck with me, and a lot of truth to that. So in honor of Mac, I just wanted to mention that. The also, we also lost a great employee, someone who I knew, Michael Trent, Water and Water Services. I engaged Michael here and there and met him, and I just thought he had a certain way and a personality about him and a skill set that was awesome. And I was sad to learn of his passing, I guess, last Thursday, about a week ago. So to his, to his friends and family and our staff that worked with him, I just wanted to give a shout-out to Michael Trent. That's what I have for today.
Great, Commissioner Schrader?
All right. Well, it's been a busy week. It started out meeting with the United States Army Corps of Engineers with our Public and Government Relations Staff as we worked to unlock the locks. It was an excellent meeting. We had some of the top brass on the phone, and it appears as if we've taken another big step to actually try to keep that facility open, but open and repaired so it's safe. And the Corps actually did give two thumbs up to that particular option. Now, the next hurdle is going to be finding a transferee. That is, who will be the entity or agency or group that will manage after repair that would manage and handle that locks? And that's going to be a heavy lift because, you know, we need to, we need to figure that out because the success of whether or not we get the folks together to actually take over that facility is really, I think, at a critical point in this process. We have gotten a lot of help from our federal delegation on this. We've gotten support from all five of our federal folks. We have gotten state support, including the co-chair of Ways and Means at the Senate, you know, Richard Devlin. We've gotten support from a special community solutions committee that was chaired by Governor Barbara Roberts. So we have legislation in Salem that will help us set up a statewide committee. We're keeping our fingers crossed that that's going to move through with dollars, so again, we can identify a transferee. Really interesting to see how the Corps works, actually. They are military, as so is my colleague, Mr. Humberson, and yeah, they definitely know how to run a project, and they certainly know how to engineer a project. Likewise, yesterday, Commissioner Savis and I had our annual update with Clackamas Women's Services who are housed at the Family Justice Center. They're doing a great job. They are, have really come a long way since I was first here as a commissioner to professionalize and to expand all the services available to folks who are victims, women and children, also men who are victims of domestic violence. Kudos to them. And also, the kind of their sister nonprofit is the Children's Center, and they are having their open house today, I believe, from about 3:00 to 6:00. And I'm going to try and, try and get myself there depending on what else happens today on my schedule. Last night, Commissioner Fisher and I attended the Merrill Hirst College Starry Night where we helped raise money with Darlene Houli and Past Commissioner and former Mayor Judy Hammersted for scholarships to Merrill Hirst University, which really has done a fine job, particularly in extending adult education and continuing education. Our housing advisory team is an interdisciplinary team from planning, human services, transportation and economic development. We continue to meet to take a look at how we can handle our housing crisis and how to come up with additional housing for veterans. So that is still in process. We're getting codes changed. We're analyzing, you know, property places. We're taking a look of what that would look like. We're going to be starting to do outreach to the local community on this, and that is coming along nicely. Lastly, Friday afternoon, Friday at noon is the fundraiser for Clackamas Volunteers in Medicine. They are actually the nonprofit that helps augment folks' access to primary care in Clackamas County. We do have two federally qualified healthcare clinics that we actually help provide access to primary care. And this is, this is a coalition of local docs who want to have a walk-in clinic for whoever needs it, and it helps us continue to serve populations that need medical care. And the county helps cover their liability insurance for physicians. That has been our role in helping them. Finally, arts and culture activities in the county. Dia de los Ninos, Children's Day. Dia de los Ninos, Dia de los Libros is a fun free event for the whole family. Pick up a free book and enjoy a variety of activities, some crafts, music, face painting, photo booth and lots more. Saturday, April 29th, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Sandy Public Library. And another, another event up at... And another, another event up at the mountain at Government Camp, Social History Happy Hour, fun and informative evening of Mount Hood trivia. Win prizes and learn something new about mountain history, Saturday the 29th, 6:30 to 9 p.m. at the Mount Hood Cultural Center and Museum and Government Camp. And finally, from, from my digs in Lake Oswego, God Spells Opening Night, the musical God Spell is opening for its opening night at the Lakewood, Lakewood Theater. And any more information about arts, you can go to clackamasartsalliance.org.
Also, while you're making the announcement, Resort at the Mountain, the annual Byte event is up there. It's a great place to go. Buy tickets and participate in the auction, and I will be one of the emcees. Be interesting. So, Meals on Wheels, I have an opportunity to do that every year too. I did it when I was, when I was mayor, they call it Mayor's on Wheels, and, and it's a great program, and one of the best parts about that is that people who don't normally leave their home, may not have family, but bringing those meals, you have an opportunity to check up on them. And one time I went, there was an issue in the house. There was actually a trail of blood, and we were able to get that person some assistance. This was many, a number of years ago. It's also, I knew most of those people in Milwaukee. You know, they're, they're friends and family and, and folks you, who are big parts of the community, but perhaps are forgotten and home alone. So, if you, if you know somebody who might appreciate a visit, you know, reach out to them. I spent some time in Salem on the transportation package. You know, the region's been working a long time to come, come together an agreement on specific projects, one being the Rose Quarter, one being the I-205 from Stafford to Oregon City, including the bridge, the Abernathy Bridge. I mean, I, for some reason, those lanes seem to drop quite often, and so we have to kind of force that, that message forward, but we were well received in Salem. Also included was the Highway 217, and some money for a new light rail line to Tigard. And so, as a region, we're looking at doing something very different. Usually, when a project is on the highway, ODOT manages, we just say, "We need this fixed." But the effort is, as a region, to participate and get that done. 205 and the Rose Quarter, you know, the bridge, the interstate bridge is being discussed again. If that bridge project moves forward, there's two things that need to be done before that bridge, and one is I-205, and the other is the Rose Quarter. That should be done before any bridge project even starts, because once it starts, those, those highways, they're not, if they're not already parking lots, they certainly will be. Also, Mac Woods, you know, I, he and I had a different relationship, but, you know, he cared. He certainly cared about vets, and I met a number of people that he, he recruited into the military and really appreciated him. So, Mac, believe it or not, from Jim Bernard, you'll be missed. One more thing, I, I, you may have read the paper. In 1925, my grandfather started a business in Milwaukee, and that business was located along the old streetcar line that went through downtown Milwaukee. In 19, and that was located on a piece of land owned by St. John's Catholic Church, which was the location of the original mission church. And my uncle was the pastor at the time, and had, actually had his own train, which he rode to Malala, Estacada, and, you know, it was part of his mission. He called his brother in 1925, and he came up, helped him build a new church, and they tore down the other church, and my business, or my family business, opened there in 1925. 1951, my, my father bought the business from his father. In 1985, I bought the business from my father, and on Monday, that business will be closed. It, you know, the light rail, well, as much as I love it, has created a lot of challenges. But it's an opportunity for Milwaukee to get something that they're very excited about. And you'll have to learn from the city of Milwaukee what that's going to be, because I've been asked not to talk too much about it, but it's very exciting. And I'll tell you, I sat in with the mayor yesterday, and just about everything they, the developer mentioned, he was so thrilled with. And it's a great project, will bring revitalization to Milwaukee, and something that I think my grandfather and my father, I'm going to get teary-eyed, will be very proud of. And I had an opportunity to talk to my father about the future before he passed away, and he was, you know, supportive, so I think he'll be very happy. My grandfather was a volunteer fireman. My father was a mayor in the 60s, and I was a mayor in the 2000s, so I want to thank the community for 92 years of support, and thank all those employees. There were hundreds of them for supporting the family. And with that, we are adjourned. Thanks.